465588656 and password 93075614068. This meeting is also to be aired on New Market Channel 13 for those wishing to watch on their TV and streaming at www.nuemarketnh.gov/channeled thirteen. B. Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave no notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website at the board at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash www.nu market.gov forward slash planning hyphen board. C. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has problems, please call 603-659-3617 extension 1321 or email channel 13@newmarketnh.gov. D. Adjourn the meeting if public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So I will start roll call. Val Shelton.
I am in the town hall in person, present.
Bill Doucette.
Present, nobody in the room except myself.
Sarah Finch.
Present and alone.
Jamie Bruton. No Jamie Bruton. Ted Sealy.
Jamie is here.
Oh, Jamie's here, okay. Town hall.
Ted Sealy is present and alone.
Okay, Christian Matthews, I believe won't, it won't be on. Jane Ford.
Present and alone.
And I, Eric Baumann, am present and alone. Alright, so I'd like to start by reciting the pledge of allegiance. If you'd all join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So then first on the agenda is public comments. Are there any public comments? Anybody have anything to say in the public? Anybody there, Val?
We have three members in the audience. I don't see any coming for public comments.
Okay, is anybody on the Zoom call that want, that has any public comments? Okay, hearing none. I have one that I would like to read. Diane got an email this afternoon. I think the appropriate place to read this is in the public comments. This is a message to the New Market Planning Board. I live in my home at 4 Elm Court and have lived in New Market for the last four years. I'd like to submit my strong support for the New Market Planning Board to support the policy that would allow New Market residents to have detached accessory dwellings on their properties. I'm emailing you in order to have my comments heard by the town and the planning board. I believe it is important to have a variety of housing options for renters in New Market, particularly options that could provide more affordable rent. Moreover, I think it is important that residents have the opportunity to utilize their property to provide housing that is separate slash detached from the main house. Detached accessory dwellings provide more financial security to our residents through supplemental income. Additionally, more often than not, accessory dwellings are used for multi-generational housing for adult children and older family members. As a town dedicated to families and community, I think it is imperative that we follow through on this commitment to family values by enabling our residents to support their loved ones with detached accessory dwellings. It makes no sense to allow for accessory dwellings but not detached accessory dwellings. I urge all members of the planning board to support accessory dwellings in New Market. If I should, if I should submit my comments elsewhere, please let me know. Thank you for your time and consideration. Best regards, John Green, 4 Elm Court in New Market. Okay, is there anybody else that has any public comments? Hearing none, I will close the public comments at, I have 7:18. Next, review and approval of the minutes, draft minutes of August 11th. Does anybody have any, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Valerie Shelton.
Is there a second?
Second, Bill Doucette.
Thank you, Val. Thank you, Bill. Any comments on the agenda?
Eric, are we in, we in there?
Go ahead, Mikell.
Just, are we in or are we out at this point?
As far as, in us, the voting.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did not, Mikell, I forgot you were there, I'm sorry. Are you, are you by yourself, Mikell?
I am, yes. Am I a voting member today or no?
I, I think, go ahead, Val.
Wasn't me.
It was me, actually. Mikell, Val.
I think we have a full board.
I think we do. Three, four, five, six.
Except for Christian Matthews, but we, nobody can fill in for him, right?
Right.
So as of now, you are not voting member tonight, Mikell.
On that agenda item.
On that agenda item, correct. Any, any comments on the minutes? I, I will say I have one comment, one modification on the present, on the members present. Jane Ford is not listed, but I believe Jane was at the meeting.
I was present, yep.
Did you catch that, Diane, under the, the present members, Jane Ford, her name is omitted, she was a, she was there? Alright, does anybody else have any comments on the, on the minutes? Alright, hearing none, I'll take a roll call. Although, if you're in favor, say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Val Shelton.
Aye.
Bill Doucette.
Aye.
Sarah Finch.
I was not present, so I'll abstain.
Jamie Bruton.
I'm also abstaining as, as was not present.
Ted Sealy. Christian Matthews is not here. Jane Ford.
Aye.
And I, Eric Baumann, vote aye. So thank you, the motion passes. Thank you. Alrighty, next on the agenda is 77 Hershey Lane LLC, Waltatini/Chimberg Builders, Inc., continuation of a public hearing for an application for an 11 lot open space, single-family subdivision with municipal water and sewer services on a 12 acre lot. The lot is located at 77 Hershey Lane, tax map R4 lot 3 in the R2 zone.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bill Doucette, I'll be sitting down on this one.
So Mikell, I will appoint you as a, as a member for, to listen, to vote on this one if we get to a vote tonight.
Okay.
So for the members of the board and anybody listening, at last we left, we had gotten a memo from our review wetlands person, Mark West, with some concerns about the wetland buffer impacts. Since then, I believe GOV Environmental has responded to Mr. West and the TRC, we, we held a meeting to go through the changes that were made to the plans based on Mark West's comments. So that's a, I think we got through everything, but I'd like to turn it over. I see Jim Gove on the line. Jim, could you walk the board through the changes that were made to the plans based on the comments and discussions that you had with Mark West, please?
I'd be glad to. So we, we first off, did a function and value assessment of the various wetlands. And we all came to the agreement that basically the prime wetland was well protected and completely outside, the buffer completely outside of any work that would be done. The next question was about the Vernal Pool Buffer. And at that time, originally, we had a 25 foot setback to the Vernal Pool in the area where we were actually close to the Vernal Pool. We actually don't have any direct wetland impacts anywhere. So these are all buffer impacts, upland buffer impact. So what we did was, we actually increased that buffer for the Vernal Pool to 50 feet so that, so that now it's, it's a better, better protected. The last one is this finger that basically kind of springs out of the ground at the bottom of the hill and drains toward the prime wetland. And there were two concerns about that. The first was the fact that grading was coming very, very close to that finger. And the second was the overland flow from the Vernal Pool, it went subsurface and then, and then broke out at the beginning of the finger. And the concern that Mark had was that we were actually combining the flow from that Vernal Pool, combining it with stormwater discharge such that we were actually taking some of that, I guess we'd call it really clean water from the Vernal Pool and mixing it in with stormwater. So two things were done there. First off, we, the, the, there was a change in the design such that there's now a duplex. And by doing that, we're able to pull the grading way back from the finger. So now the grading comes within 80 feet on that side where we have the duplex. The second thing was, we actually put in a pipe so that that overland flow that goes from the Vernal Pool down toward the finger is actually picked up and is not mixed with any of the stormwater. And then it discharges directly at the point where the finger starts. So there is not a mixing of the, so the natural runoff from the Vernal Pool and where it originally discharges into the finger. So those were the primary changes and we really did get a, quite a large reduction in the amount of impact within the buffers of the wetlands on site.
Thank you, Mr. Gove. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gove? I'll ask Val, does anybody there have any questions?
Any members of the audience have questions for Mr. Gove? None.
Any board members there have any questions, Val?
This is Val. Jim, could you just explain again, the, the connected pipe between, I guess, the surface water runoff between 5 and 7?
Right.
And then exiting down to the, the, that finger?
Right, so.
Is it a catch?
If, if we.
A culvert?
It, it's actually a pipe. And we call it an overflow pipe, but in essence, what was happening there is that the water would come out of the Vernal Pool and essentially just go into the ground. And, and, and then it went down through the valley subsurface. So it didn't break out at the surface at all, it was, it was going subsurface. But where, where it finally went down to the bottom of the valley is where it actually broke out and formed this finger, which then made its way to the, to the prime wetland. So the, originally, it was just a mixing of water. So in other words, before this, you'd have the flow coming out from the Vernal Pool and basically making its way down through the subdivision and ending up going into a detention basin and then being discharged out to the finger. And, and if it was a storm event, then there would be a mixing of the impervious surface of the road and that water. So the concern was that, well, you, we shouldn't be mixing these two sources of water. The, the road runoff is, is clearly, you know, has to be treated because it's road runoff. And so therefore, there shouldn't be a mixing of, quote, the clean water and then the, and then the, and then this runoff from the road. So there was an, so basically, in order to separate the two, we, we had this pipe put in and it, it actually picks up as a, as a small depression right between 5 and 7. And then it's underground all the way down to where it exits at the overflow pipe. And so that is, directs that, that, the, the clean water down to the finger. The rest of the surf, the rest of the, of the, of the impervious surface continues on the same way as it did in the past. In other words, it goes down into a forbey and then goes to another basin and then still another basin for treatment before discharge. Now, I am not capable of telling you the treatment, that how this treatment all works, that's something that Scott Cole can do much better than I can. But the concept was, we basically separate the clean water from the water that would be derived by the stormwater runoff from the impervious surfaces.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Do any board members on the Zoom part of this meeting have any questions for Mr. Gove? Okay, as, as the, I was the rep at the TRC meeting and I've, because of my business, I've done a lot of work over the years with Mark West and, you know, my, Mark wouldn't say that we, we should approve this or not approve it, obviously, it's our decision. He did certainly indicate that this is a much, much better design than what was originally submitted. I think, Diane, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and I think Bob Saunders from Underwood had concern about the culvert, about the pipe. Mark West wasn't really concerned about that, saying that this is really not a wildlife trail. There's, there's other areas on the site that the wildlife would use more readily than this site. I think that was one of the, the concerns. Is that, Diane, do you?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I have Mr. West's letter that I can share the screen and make available if people would like to review that. Would that be helpful?
Sure.
Okay, I need the host to disable participant screen sharing so that I can put up my, so I can share the screen. And I did ask Tim if he could do that. Is Tim the host? I sent him an email.
Does everybody have a copy of that letter?
Well, I did. I sent it out. And Val and I talked about, it would be nice to be able to see some of the graphics that go along with these and to the extent I can, but it's, I need to have the host share the screen with me so I can do that. Tim, are you there? Tim Kremm?
Working on it, Diane.
Okay. I didn't know if anyone heard me.
I do have one question for you. I'm not sure if, if you'd be able to answer it or not, but is, at the top of the pipe, is there some sort of catch to prevent it from clogging with leaves and debris?
Yeah, I'm actually gonna ask Scott Cole, Scotty, oh yeah, who's there? Yeah, Scott, can you address the actual design of that pipe and, and the size and everything?
I can, Jim. Basically, that's just a standard 24 inch culvert. That's due, the sizing is due to the possible amount of rain when we get a large rain event. There is nothing actually on the front of that. The intent was to leave it open, open-ended on both ends. So it goes into the pipe, then goes into a drainage structure. As you can see, because of the grades, there's somewhat of a drop in the drainage structure. And then it daylights right before the wetlands. While we're waiting for the graphics, that was also another contention from Underwood was the location of the outlet is actually right at the wetland finger. We did that as a result of a comment from Mark West. He did not want the inlet, excuse me, the outlet to be further away. He wanted that actually to daylight right at the finger. So that was a result of just trying to appease him in his request. But it is just an open-ended 24 inch culvert, basically, the whole way.
And I, I will confirm what Scott just said. I had a conversation with Mr. West about that also. And he's, you know, that, that's not a very significant wetland that that dumps into, so he's not concerned about that at all. He actually would prefer that to be right at the edge of the wetlands.
Mr. Chairman, I've been able to locate Mr. West's letter and it should be showing, showing on the screen. Can everybody see that?
I cannot see it. I see my own screen. No, I can't hear, sorry.
That's okay. I can't see what people are seeing, but, okay. So anyway, this, this is Mr. West's recommendations regarding the revised plan that was submitted and the comments and redesign done for the wetland buffer piece. Do you have a graphic, Scott, of the, the plan, the color version of the plan? Is that something that you have accessible?
I do have the plan, yes, if I can be allowed to show it.
Sure.
Somebody would have to.
I will stop sharing and I'll let you take this screen.
The host will have to allow me to screen share.
Yep.
While we're, while we're waiting for Scott to get the screen sharing capability, do you have the actual waiver request letter that you can be prepared to screen? Do we have that?
I believe that it was on the town website and I'm gonna look at that right now. We put up a lot of stuff for the Hershey Lane project and I thought that was part of it. Waiver support requests.
There's a letter from Gove supporting the waiver request. Is that the official?
Diane, I do have the official request if you want to add another person.
Read that to us, Alex, just, that would be helpful. I thought I had the letter, but I don't, sorry about that. We did send it out to all the planning board members way in advance, though.
Yeah. Alex, that, that's a letter that you signed?
No, nope. I have a letter that was submitted by Beals.
Okay.
Initial request for a waiver that was submitted back in January.
Oh, okay, okay, that's why I, I didn't.
I think it was revised a couple of times, though. If I'm not mistaken. Do you, do you want me to read that waiver out loud?
Alex, why don't we let, why don't we let Scott share the plans and win into any other questions, then when we get to that point, yeah, I think you should read that out loud for the record.
Okay, great. Scott probably has a copy and could also probably screen share it if he gets that permission.
Yeah, I don't think I have a copy of the waiver with me, Alex. I'm still waiting for the screen permission to show the plan.
Yeah, I thought it was up on the website, but it does not appear to be there. That was before we went to Zoom meetings back in January.
Diane, would you have a copy of the PDF since you've already been?
I don't have the PDFs for that.
Okay.
For the waiver, I don't have it at my disposal. I, I'm working off this little laptop, 11 by, eight and a half by 11 size. I do not, I'm not in my office and I don't have access to all the town's files.
Is, is Tim working on getting Scott?
He's provided it. I'm not sure why Scott's not getting up on, why he's not being able to. He, he's made him a co-host.
Scott, can you upload that drawing?
Yeah, let me try this. How's that?
Okay, you got it.
Everybody see that?
Yay, good job.
Perfect.
I don't know where my red just went, but, there we go. So here's the plane that we provided for TRC. Basically, the red shading illustrates the amount of buffer impact. You can see here where Jim was talking about, the 80 foot dimension here, this is where the duplex has, is now proposed in 8 and 10, where before we had two single units and the grading came much closer. So we have a savings of roughly 8,000 square feet of impact in that area. On the previous discussion of the overflow pipe, this is the outlet here that leads to the wetland finger. We have a small riprap apron. Upstream of that would be a drain manhole that is clearly for a vertical relief because of the depth from here to here, basically, the structure allows the pipe to go up. And then from the drain manhole to the inlet here, which is again, just a 24 inch pipe, wide open pipe, that takes only clear, natural rainwater with no drainage, no drainage water going in that whatsoever. So those are the major changes per the, the TRC meeting in what we provided. Are there any specific questions to this?
Val, I have one question. So are you proposing to use some type of onsite drainage systems for each of the buildings on these lots that are, that are, are basically sheet feeding into that pipe?
Oh, yeah, you can see actually on the. Oh yeah, you can see actually on the, call it the northern side of the planned valve. So units 2, 4, 6, 8, and 10 will have stone drip edges on both sides, which will take the clean runoff and direct it through into the groundwater. The rest of it goes into the roadside swales. The drainage complex is all brought into the cul-de-sac where it's basically a sedimentation area. And it goes out into a, you can see that the large area is actually a bio-retention pond.
I'm sorry, I'm referring more to 3, 5, and 7, mostly 5 and 7.
Oh yeah, so 3, 5, and 7, basically, as you can see, there's a catch basin in between 5 and 7. So any of the runoff coming from those units or the driveways are captured in that catch basin, which goes into the cul-de-sac and then, as I said, into the drainage system. So that's all down gradient of those buildings.
Who and how are you going to manage all these onsite drainage systems that are on private property?
It'll be part of the association.
Oh, so the association will have easements for all the drainage?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, so there's the drainage and utilities where needed.
Thank you.
Hey Val, just to add a little bit to your comments. It came up at the TRC meeting again about the stormwater management system here. And both Rick Malaski and Steve were very adamant again that that detention basins will be privately owned. They will not be owned by the town. And so that's one of the things as we go through this, that they're going to have to make sure there is access to that for maintenance. And it'll have to be the homeowners association will be responsible for maintaining that system.
So the town will only be responsible for two catch basins? One in the cul-de-sac and one as you come in on the left? Or will they be responsible for none of these?
No, whatever's in the roadway, the town will maintain. The basins and the stormwater components outside of the right-of-way will be maintained by the homeowners association.
Great, thank you very much.
And to add to that, Mr. Chairman, from what I understand, in the event the town seems, deems necessary, they have a right to access those areas.
In emergencies.
That is correct. They will have the ability to maintain anything that needs to be maintained and charge the homeowners association or whatever for the associated costs. That's the discussion we had. That's correct.
Thank you.
Hey Eric, this is Jane. Got a quick question. At any point, if the association does not maintain it, that's a ramification they live with, correct? But if that ramification affects the town's obligations, what happens then? Or could it affect the town's obligations?
Yeah, so Jane, if for some reason the association does not maintain their components and it becomes, you know, a problem, the town DPW has the ability to go in and rectify any issues they see fit and charge the homeowners association for those associated costs.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully, I won't get to that, but that is the process.
That's how it works. Okay, thank you for that.
Before we leave that, just for the record, Diane, can you make sure if we follow what Radigan as to what is the ramifications if the HOA does not perform those duties? Just to make a note.
You're muted, Diane.
I would be happy to get a legal opinion from Mr. Radigan. I'd like to also mention that these matters are clarified in the stormwater regulations that we've been working on under the new MS4 program. So that clarifies it even further.
I just want to make sure. We don't, you know, having so many issues with priorly approved subdivisions over drainage and then basically pitting neighbors to neighbors or not having HOAs, you know, are not active. So they're not maintaining drainage structures. I just don't want to see that, you know, 10, 15, 20 years from now.
So what I'd like to do, what I'd like to do to just keep this moving along is, Alex, if you have the waiver request letter, could you even read it in? At this point, we need to decide whether we're willing to grant the waiver for the impacts within the 100-foot buffer. If we decide to allow that, then the applicant has some other design issues or design changes they need to make modifications. But if we don't, then obviously the whole project changes significantly. So I think that's the next step. So that's what this whole discussion, I guess, is leading towards. Alex, do you have that document available?
I do. And I just read through it quickly. And of course, this was drafted, you know, back in January. At that time, we were asking for a 25-foot waiver. At this time, we don't impact the 25 feet. We're actually out of the, up to 50 feet. So irregardless, I'm going to read it as written because it's what you guys have on file, but just as a note. So this was submitted by Christian Smith of Beals Associates. Seeking the following relief: waiver to subdivision regulation, section 3.14A, section 4, open space plan evaluation criteria, creates an upland buffer of natural native species, vegetation of a depth sufficient to protect and maintain the ecological stability of adjacent wetlands and surface waters, including creeks, streams, springs, lakes, and ponds. The sufficiency of such buffer shall be set at 100 feet unless waived by the planning board. We respectfully request that the wetland setback be kept at 25 feet for poorly drained soils as is stated in the underlying zone. The granting of the waiver will not conflict with the purpose and intent of the regulation as our interpretation of the verbiage cited above appears to indicate that the wetlands adjacent to surface waters as described, not to all wetlands on the parent parcel. Based on this, the section would not apply to the wetland areas not adjacent to surface waters as defined. We're maintaining the requisite buffer to the prime wetland area and additional information regarding the environmental aspects in support of this request is provided under separate cover by GOV Environmental Services in the final paragraph of their memo. And I do have that memo as well if you'd like me to read that in.
Yes, I think that would be helpful also. Thank you.
All right, let me pull that up here. Sorry about that. Jim Gove, you don't happen to have that letter. It was written by Lou Curly. I definitely have it somewhere. Just didn't have it.
Yeah, it would be, it would be nice if I could lay my hands on it, but I don't have it either.
What was the date of the letter, Alex?
What was that? I'm sorry.
Date of the letter.
The point of the letter was that the function and value, and Jim kind of did go over this a little bit in the beginning anyway, but the point of the letter being that the function of the vernal pool was fairly low. And so he felt that the protection of 50 feet around that vernal pool was sufficient as well as the finger of the wetland. The finger is not classified as a prime wetland because of its size and the function and value of that, that finger of wetland was not a high function and value to support such a large buffer. And he said it much better than I did, but that's the gist.
Thank you, Alex. So here's, here's where I think we are. Obviously, we have this plan in front of us. We have wetland buffers. The thing that I kind of struggle with, I scratch my head over, is the fact that if this were a, not an open space subdivision, they could have, we would have and could have much more impacts in the wetland buffer, buffers. And they would still, they could be in conformance with our regulations. So our regulations for open space are more stringent than for conventional subdivision. But I look at this and I think the fact that we're getting all this open space, I think, far outweighs the impacts in the buffer zones. Especially when you consider that if this project were to go away, eventually somebody would come in here with a conventional subdivision and we would have much more impacts in the buffer zones and we would have no open space. So it's a quirk in our regulations and it's, quite a few towns have kind of the same regulation, which doesn't really make a whole lot of sense. But based on the fact that conventional subdivision could be built here and we would have more impacts on the buffer zone, and the fact that I think the applicant has made significant changes, work with Mark West, that Jim Gove has worked with Mark West to help alleviate some of his concerns or most of his concerns, I support granting the waiver. I'd like to get the board's opinion, the other board members' opinion on that.
Well, this is Val. I'll actually make a motion to grant the waiver as requested by the applicant just on, just on the condition that the distances be modified to reflect the plan presented by the applicant this evening. So that's part of the record. So I'll make that motion, then we can open to discussion. But I'd also like to state, I appreciate the applicant kind of thinking outside the box and coming up with the duplex design. I think that's in keeping with our master plan in the housing chapter and kind of coming up with some innovative, you know, housing alternatives for the market. So I appreciate them doing that. I think that's going to be a good product from a real estate perspective. But I will make that motion.
Valerie, could we clarify that you're referring to the buffer request from the 100-foot?
By making an offer to approve the waiver that is requested by the applicant, but they had specific 25-foot?
Yeah, but that's the old one. That's not the new one. The new one was for 100 feet and that's a critical difference.
No, I understand. I'm making this motion subject to changing the modification or the request.
Still looking for the 100-foot buffer request so that we, I can read that into the record. So we're all on the same page and we're clear.
So I guess what I'm saying is it's a 50-foot buffer from the vernal pool, correct?
It's 100 feet.
But you're waving that. And they're looking for 80 feet from the finger as I see this plan.
I can clarify. I think what I said was misunderstood. So if you see the red on the plan that Scott Cole has presented, and Scott, maybe you could use your mouse and point to the 25-foot buffer, the 50-foot buffer, and the 100-foot buffer so everyone can see those.
This line here is the 25. This line here is the 50. And the 100 is out here.
So we do have impacts for grading and drainage within the 50-foot buffer on that wetland finger there. And then on the pool, there are not impacts within the 50-foot buffer.
Yeah, we are clear up to the 50 and then the 100's back here.
Right.
But to answer your question, Diane, I'm fine with granting the waiver for the impact shown in red on this plan.
Okay, but that's different. It was for 100-foot waiver buffer requirement waiver. That's what the request was that was sent to us that Mark West evaluated.
And they're looking in the waiver request for reduction from?
I will find the letter. Okay, I'm going through over 200 or 300 emails now trying to find it. Okay?
Diane, we don't need to find the letter. Val made a motion to basically approve the wave as requested according to this plan, in accordance with this plan. Is that correct, Val?
That is correct.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second. This is Sarah Finch.
Okay, now open up discussions. Any board members have any comments, any questions they would like to have answered before we move to a vote on this?
Phoenix speaking to the mic.
Can we talk about the opening at the beginning of the pipe for a moment again? I'm trying to visualize what 24 inches open actually looks like. And I feel like there's like safety issues involved there, unless I'm missing something. As I said, there wouldn't be any sort of cover or any sort of anything on top of it. And it's sitting in between two houses. So I'm, is there any other way to describe what that'll look like?
You're asking that to the applicant or to Eric?
Whoever wants to answer it.
I can try and do my best. Scott Cole from Beals Associates.
So Scott, let me ask you one thing. That is there, is the location or the grading of that make it impossible to put an inlet structure on that? Or a grate or something to just prevent clogging?
Oh no, we certainly could. Probably the best type for that particular location would be, they call it like a beehive. It's basically an elevated grate that's perforated for the water to get in and trash and whatnot will stay out. That's certainly something that we've used in the past. We don't have an issue with that if the board sees that fit.
This is Val again. Wouldn't we be dealing with that in the actual subdivision?
Absolutely.
For all these drainage structures?
Absolutely.
Correct.
Yes, we will. Yep. Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I will take a roll call. If you're in favor of granting the waiver, say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Val Shelton?
Aye.
Sarah Finch?
Aye.
Jamie Bruton?
Aye.
Jane Ford? You out there still, Jane? All right, let's go to Mikhail Zahorek.
Nay.
Still here. Wait a minute, she's muted.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just go to Mikhail and go back to her. I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't hear what you said, Mikhail.
Nay.
Nay? Jane?
Approved, aye.
And Eric Gardman, I vote aye. The motion passes five to one to grant the waiver. Thank you all. So so I guess the next step will be, Alex, you will be revising the plans based on the other comments and getting them back to us at some point here?
That's correct. So now that we have obtained the waiver, we'll work this duplex plan into the full plan set. We'll make other revisions as necessary and submit a full and complete plan for you all to review at your next planning board meeting.
We need, let's make sure that, hey, wait a minute here. Not going to be approved at the next planning board meeting.
I didn't say that. I just said that we'd submit a full and complete plan set for the next planning board meeting.
Okay, let me just say that this still has to go through the technical review committee. And we also still need to say your plans to the alteration terrain folks. And you need to have a 21-day notice in advance of that meeting. In order to, it's, so you need to have all of those things met to be able to get on the agenda for the next meeting. And it will also require review of the technical aspects by our town engineer.
Diane, can I ask a clarifying question? You just said that you need our AOT review prior to being on another planning board meeting generally.
That you're supposed to be submitting to the state. That was one of the requirements for the application completeness. And you didn't move forward with it because you didn't know if the variance, the waiver was going to be granted. Now that the waiver has been granted, then you need to come forward with your AOT application. And that needs to be reviewed by our TSC. And there's a lot of other technical issues that we have to work out. We have focused for the last five months on the wetland. for the last five months on the wetlands buffer. We haven't talked about any of the other drainage issues and issues that Rick Molaske had and so forth. So this is not ready to come back to the planning board for the next meeting. This is going back to the TRC for continuing review. Okay?
Okay. Generally, alteration of terrain is a condition of approval, no?
No, it's a requirement that you submit the application at the time that you submitted to the town, which would have been last January, and we have never seen it, and we still haven't seen it. So that has to be addressed and brought forward. Great, thank you.
All right, does anybody have anything else on this agenda item? Hearing none. All right, we'll move on. To next on the agenda is Jody Rogers, public hearing for a subdivision slash condo conversion, eight to 11 Elder Street, tax map U2 lot 180. Diane, I believe that you recommend that we accept this application as being complete?
I do. I did get a letter out to, or an email out to the applicant's representative. There were a few deficiencies in the plan, and he addressed all those deficiencies, notified the town. The department has, it needed to be included in the review and coordination process. So at this point, the application is complete, and it is ready for a technical review by the planning board, and I have put up on my screen a copy of the subdivision plan that the gentleman from Ambit Engineering provided to us.
Great, thank you, Diane. Do any board members have any questions relative to the completeness of this application?
I'll make a motion that we accept this application as complete.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion on the completeness of the application? All right, roll call, vote again. If you're in favor, say aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Val Shelton?
Aye.
Sarah Finch?
Aye.
Jamie Bruton?
Aye.
Jane Ford?
Aye.
Mikhail Zahoric?
I'm not a voting member right now.
Oh. Well, I'm going to appoint you as a voting member for this one.
For who?
Who is he filling in?
You're right, right. We're not missing. Okay, never mind. Never mind. Sorry.
Bill Dusset votes aye.
Bill Dusset. And I vote aye also. I forgot Bill Dusset was back in play. So the motion passes six to zero. Thank you. All right, now I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody from the applicant online?
Is the applicant present? The applicant is here. Would you like to?
I'm sorry, I was muted.
You'd have to come to the microphone.
Yeah, Val, could you have the applicant give us a brief overview of the project? This is a condo conversion?
Yes, she's going to come up to the microphone.
Okay.
I can take care of it, Eric. This is Paul Dobberstein from Ambit Engineering. Sorry, I was muted earlier. Yes, Jody Rogers is in the audience in person. The application that we have for you tonight is a condominium conversion of an existing lot with a duplex on it. It's in the neighborhood, as many of you know probably, has many duplexes, triplexes, even quadplexes. So we are just trying to create a condominium on the existing duplex. Essentially, the lot will be divided by extensions of the demising wall of the building to the front and rear property lines. There's no change in use in terms of, it still will be two single-family units. We're on town sewer and water. There's no site changes proposed or anything like that. I did submit a couple waiver requests to the subdivision regulations, basically regarding the need for topography soils, and then a whole host of proposed items, which we don't have any for this project. We don't require any state approvals, so we're just coming to you tonight to get your comments and review of the proposal, and look forward to your comments. I hope I can answer any questions you have. It's fairly straightforward, so I don't have a whole lot to say.
Eric, can we have the applicant's representative state their name again?
I'm sorry, Paul Dobberstein from Ambit Engineering.
Thank you.
Okay, do any planning board members have any questions for Mr. Dobberstein?
This is Val. Paul, the plan that we have submitted, it seems like there's a section that is not showing for this unit, for the ALCA on the right-hand side, or is that a diagonal line? Has no dimension. Do you actually have the plan that you could put up?
I already put it up, Val.
Thanks.
Which triangle are you referring to? I'm sorry.
No, it's in our packet. It's, it was, there was a portion that was cut off.
Oh.
Okay, the shared plan in entirety is up on the screen right now.
All right, thank you.
This is Bill Dusset. I've looked over the plan. I think it looks excellent. I have no comments.
Thank you, Bill. Any other? Val, are you all set now, Val?
All set. Yep, I'm looking at Diane's plan.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public, either online or at the town hall, that has any comments or questions concerning this?
No one from the public's coming to the microphone.
Okay, it doesn't appear that anybody's online either. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the application.
Sorry, Bill. Eric, do you want to close the public comments?
Oh, all right. I will close public comments at 8:10 PM.
And then we're dealing with waivers?
We have waivers, and I will.
Yep, we got three waivers. Hold on.
And I recommend that all three be approved.
Okay, we should, I'll read them. The first waiver request is requiring existing conditions plan showing elevation contours at a two-foot interval. Seeing this is a condominium conversion, there's no changes to the site or structure. They're requesting a waiver that's saying contours are not necessary. Do you want to take them one at a time, Val, or all three at one time?
I would go all three.
Okay. The second waiver is requiring delineation of hydroric soils by New Hampshire certified soil scientists. This is properties on water and sewer. Hydroric soils are generally required when you're doing lot loading, sizing, and septic systems. So they're saying that's not necessary. And then proposed conditions, this is section 410 F 2345678911, existing conditions such as proposed contours, plans of transportation, drainage, water supplies, sewage disposal utilities, firefighting, landscaping, recreational amenities, and location of results of test pit and percolation tests. Obviously, it's an existing site. Nothing's changing, so they're asking for a waiver at that that's saying it's not necessary. Does anybody want to make a motion relative to the waivers?
I'll make a motion that we approve the waivers as submitted.
I'll second that motion. Val?
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Does anybody have any questions or comments, concerns? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Val Shelton?
Aye.
Bill Dusset?
Aye.
Sarah Finch?
Aye.
Jamie Bruton?
Aye.
Jane Ford?
Aye.
And Eric Baardman, I vote aye. So the motion to grant the waivers passes six to zero. Okay, next, I will entertain a motion to approve the application, to approve this subdivision.
I'll make that motion. Bill Dusset?
Subject to my recommendations, Mr. Chairman.
I'll have to ask Mr. Dusset. Bill, do you have Diane's recommendations in front of you?
Yes, I'll amend my motion to be subject to Diane Hardy's recommendations.
I'll second the motion. Val?
Any discussion? Planning board members have any questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Val Shelton?
Aye.
Bill Dusset?
Aye.
Sarah Finch?
Aye.
Jamie Bruton?
Aye.
Jane Ford?
Aye.
And Eric Baardman, I vote aye. Thank you. Motion passes six to nothing.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Dusset?
Yes.
Would like us to consider at some point to take an action so that we no longer exercise jurisdiction over condominiums?
I happen to agree with that, Mr. Dusset. At one of our future meetings, we're going to talk about looking at amending some of our kind of rules and regulations and things like that, and I think that's a, one of the ones that's a fairly simple thing to address. I agree with you completely.
This is Val, and Bill, I would also support that.
Okay, so next on the agenda is the Equity Group Realtors/Rockingham Ballroom Preliminary Conceptual Consultation. The intent is, as an investment property, the building will need improvements prior to being marketable. As such, they do not have a specific tenant or use. The use may not change or anticipated, is a much less intensive use. The intent would be to come back for additional allowed uses with parameters. This is needed in order for them to make a decision on purchase, 70 and 22 Ash Swamp Road, tax map R3, lot 20 and 15. So those of you that aren't familiar with it, this is the so-called Ballroom property. Is there a representative online or in person at the town hall?
None at the town hall.
Is there anybody online representing this request? Diane, do you know who the representative is?
Yes, it's, the gentleman is here in the audience. I'm sorry. Jim Ward is here. Jim, can you hear us? I'm having a hard time hearing him. And he's here with Brian Pratt. And I cannot hear either of them.
Are they muted?
I don't see that they're muted. I guess we have a technical problem here. Is Tim still available? He is here.
Yeah.
Do you have your audio on, Jim? Can you hear us at all? He's going to call in. The engineer, Brian Pratt, is going to call in.
And James Ward can hear you.
Oh, I just can't hear him. Can anyone hear him?
I don't think so. Maybe the microphones aren't working, or his microphone isn't working.
Jim, you can call in as well. We have the number here.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, that's weird. Okay, sorry about that. This is. I guess I can get started while Jim tries to get connected. So again, I'm Brian Pratt from Postman O'Neill. I'm the civil engineer that's helping Jim Ward try to explore some due diligence on potentially purchasing the Rockingham Ballroom. So can everyone see my screen? I have the GIS map up?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So basically, so Jim has a purchase and sales on the Rockingham Ballroom. Anyone that's not familiar with it, it's Ash Swamp Road. It shares a parking lot with a salon and apartment. And basically, he wants to try to turn this into an investment property, but he doesn't have any specific tenants right now. So what we're trying to do is basically, oh, Jim, you there, Jim?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Jim, do you want me to keep going, or do you want to?
Just introduce myself quickly, and then yes, if you could continue. But thank you for taking the time tonight. So as Brian said, I do have this under agreement to purchase and as an investment property, and I'm thinking of general uses, but I don't have anything specific at this point. But I know they'll be much less intensive than what's there now. So I'm trying to get a handle on what the planning board would like to see, would require for some of the uses under the code, knowing that they'd be less intensive, and maybe at what point would the trigger something more intensive, such as, the big concern is a parking lot, which is a very expensive item, and if I don't have much use for the parking lot, I'd like to see if that's something we can discuss about having it paved or not paved. And then just also, and Brian's going to address this, whether or not, when I do have a prospective tenant, if it would require a major or minor site plan review, because we don't anticipate much change in the exterior, but probably much less intensive on the traffic and the amount of occupants in it. So with that, I'll let Brian handle the technical part of it, and I can field any questions or feedback.
Great, thanks a lot, Jim. Yeah, so there's actually a total of four lots involved, even though Jim's only really purchasing like two. There's the Rockingham Ballroom lot, which the Ballroom is basically on a lot that's just slightly larger than the building itself. They share the parking lot. There's about 27, 28 spaces, and there's some shared parking easements. And then there's a gravel lot on the other side. So the Ballroom, you know, when they had events, they would, they would use that gravel parking lot across the way for the customers. Little complicated, because part of the lot on the other side is actually in Newfield. But as Jim mentioned, we really don't intend to do much on that other lot. Really depends on the use, though. So it's in the B1 zone, so there's a number of uses that are allowed. All the uses are basically hotel, conference center, recreation facility. Those really wouldn't work here because of the parking demand and the septic demand. But some of the other uses that are possible that could work are retail, office, daycare, studios, service, wholesale, light manufacturing, or research and development. So we know that the septic system and the parking obviously will be the controlling factor. So the lots combined are about 1.6 acres, and it's an onsite septic system. So we're really only allowed just under 2,000 gallons per day. So the salon already uses about 925, so that really leaves us just about 1,000 gallons per day to do whatever we want. So, you know, that really rules out any type of restaurant or any type of high septic load use. So, you know, we're thinking maybe, you know, maybe a clothing studio, yoga studio, a little dance studio, a small like specialty gym, maybe a workshop, light industrial, daycare, woodworking, contractor shop, or some offices along those lines, something that will, you know, kind of fit in with those septic uses. We've been doing some due diligence, just studying the site itself, and like I mentioned, we know septic system is going to be one of the controlling factors. It looks like they're, the septic's are not, they're a little deficient. We're still exploring exactly what is going on up there, but we're not really sure yet. But whatever we do, we know that we'll have to bring the septic system up to compliance. So we have a proposed sketch on kind of what we think may be the solution for that, which would basically be capturing the septic flow from the two buildings, both the salon and the Ballroom.
Bill Dusset would like to speak.
Mr. Chairman, is this a public, has this been noticed?
No.
We can't have this planned up here.
Okay, I can go back to here. Does that work? Okay, so I'll be more general then. Basically, the intent would be probably to install septic system on the gravel on the lot across the street. The parking, you know, obviously, we're going to have to do some parking caps. As it is, the salon and apartment use about eleven parking spaces. That leaves us about fifteen. Again, we, you know, we can't really have any, any high intense uses there. So basically, what, you know, what we're here to do is, as you mentioned, is to see kind of what, what the board thinks about, you know, redeveloping the site and really kind of what they, what their thoughts are on, you know, the plan is. You know, we really don't want to do a lot of exterior improvements. We'd like to find a use that we can basically just use the building, renovate the building, maybe carve it up into multiple uses, or hopefully find one user that can take the full eighty-six hundred square feet. And, you know, I know this, by the size of the building, it would kick it into a major site plan. But, you know, the major site plan applications require, you know, whole boundary survey, you know, a lot of engineering and stuff like that. So we'd be probably seeking a waiver on some of the requirements, like landscaping, lighting, just to basically kind of use the site mostly as it exists today. But, you know, like I said, that's why we're here, just to kind of get the thoughts and figure out what the board thinks about everything.
Let me jump in for a second. Part of this is, I'd like to find uses that aren't so intensive and thus also are budget-minded people, like workshops, yoga studios. And so, you know, the less I have to put into it, the more I can solicit people that have a hard time paying these high rents that are good uses for the towns that people like to use, but they have a hard time finding workable space at reasonable rents, making, making their whole business fly for some of these lesser intense uses. Such as yoga, woodshop, bike shop perhaps, something like that would service the hikers and bikers on the trail, kind of stuff like that.
Thanks, Jim.
And we don't think, we may not even be using the parking lot. And so that's one of the questions to pose in a general way is if it's not used, but I'm using the building, or if there's very little use, we're certainly not going to use it to the degree it was used before. So, you know, I can understand if I came back in with a bar and restaurant and use all the parking. Yeah, paving would be appropriate. But I'm trying to get a feel from the board if it's appropriate, if there's only ten cars there a day, and maybe one or two cars might get in the overflow parking lot. Would that be something that the board would see appropriate?
Okay, thank you. I think I'll open it up to the board for questions. Val, do you have any questions? Comments?
Well, in a conceptual review, I think you're just trying to get an understanding. I mean,
Right.
as to, you know, what we're thinking of your plan. But it's hard to make any comments without really knowing what the plan is.
Yeah, I'm trying to give you some parameters, and I understand you'll give me some broad parameters back because you don't have specific uses, I understood. But just after what I presented, is there some, you know, broad parameters of what might be required of me? And maybe if there was, I look, I guess those people that go and develop buildings, and they have multiple uses, and they look, they build them on a spec basis. They do often get their approvals, and then they go find the tenants. I guess I'm trying to do the same thing and get some feedback.
Yeah, what I've, what I've done in other towns is kind of given a list of, you know, list of potential uses that we could put in there and do like a conservative parking estimate. And then as the uses come online, as long as, you know, the planner or the building inspector can go back to the original approval and say, okay, if you're adding, you know, 2,000 square feet of retail, okay, that only takes, you know, five parking spaces. So you still have seven spaces left. So, you know, we don't want to have to come back to the planning board every time a new user comes on. So, you know, we were hoping to maybe get some sort of, you know, feedback on if we came in with a site plan approval, just some general parameters, like Jim said, you know, just kind of says, okay, these are the kind of uses we think are going to come in. And, you know, if there's seventeen spaces available on the paved parking, and maybe we can use up to ten on the other side. So, you know, maybe we come in and say, okay, well, here's what twenty-seven parking spaces would be. Is that something the board would be amenable to? With, you know, just a minor, you know, kind of a waiver to basically bring it back to a minor site plan, but with a septic design plan and, you know, any, any minor site plan improvement that we're proposing other than a full, you know, just, just, you know, in lieu of doing a full boundary and a full engineering plan and spending, you know, tens of thousands of dollars and all that.
Bill, did I see you raise your hand?
Yeah. So Brian, I'm sure you've reviewed our regulations, and you know what the standards are, what triggers minor, what triggers major. So I don't need to tell you that if it triggers major, you're doing everything. With the flexibility that you're looking at, where if we add a little bit here, a little bit there, a little bit there, the only way you're going to accomplish that is a major.
Okay. Now, could we be a major with, you know, a number of waivers, though? You know, a waiver on the utility plan? Because, you know, we just showed the
The criteria for minor and major is written out in the regulations.
Right, but that's what the waiver process is for. So that's, you know, you can, you can waive
No, no, the criteria is clear. Change of use, expansion of use by square foot. You're not going to get a waiver to go from major to minor.
Okay. But we could get a waiver from certain aspects of that. I'm asking, I mean,
I wouldn't, I wouldn't budget for it.
Okay. Okay, I mean, it's, it's going to be a site plan with minimal changes, most likely, unless something crazy happens. So I would
It's a large surface area. I think it's unlikely you're going to find this as a minor.
I understand that. No, I understand we'll submit it as a major, but the major has a lot more sections of the regulations. So there's a few of the, at least a few of those that doesn't make sense to do. If there's no physical changes, then it doesn't really make sense to make, like, these whole, these whole plans, but
Well, I, I mean, Brian, I'm sure you've been doing this for a long time. Our regulations are pretty standard. They're pretty standard across the state of New Hampshire. And if you're going to change use and change things, you need to bring it up to current standards. Current standards is a paved parking lot.
Okay.
You're, you're looking at full, full major, major review, boundary topo, design, AOT, the full, the full nine yards.
Okay.
Would you anticipate if we came in with a proposal that was not going to use the lot across the street, that because we own it, you would incorporate it and make it be paved even though it's not going to be used?
No, no, we don't have any jurisdiction over what you're not applying for.
Okay. So if we had five more spaces over there, would we probably be required, we require just the five, not the whole?
If you add five spaces over there, you're changing the use of that lot.
Right.
Pretty sure that's going to trigger a major review on that lot.
So you'd want, so whatever parking we need to code is what you'd want paid, but not more. No, we wouldn't have
I did not say that. I, I would defer, Brian, and I would suggest you talk to Brian about that relative to the definition of major and minor in town of Newmarket.
Oh, basically, you're saying anything that's substandard, if these parking spaces are eight inches too short, you're going to make us bring them all into compliance as part of the change of use, major site plan application? Is that, is that my understanding?
I would defer to Eric on that. But I think that to get, you know, if you want to split hairs, that you're doing, you know, an eight and a half foot instead of a nine, not by eighteen parking space, we're happy to discuss things like that. We have in the past.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have real survey on this. Everything that we have is reference plans, and I don't know the level of survey, of survey that's been completed. So I'm not sure what's completely compliant and what's not. You know, the hope was that this board would be understanding that this parking lot has been here since, you know, I don't know, 20 years, and we'd hope to continue to use it in its current capacity. But it sounds like, like that you basically want everything brought up to code unless there's a really good reason why it can't.
Well, Brian, you can look at the photo, same photo that I'm looking at, none of that parking's compliant.
Right, it looks a little short.
Quite a bit short, yeah. So, this is Eric Bottomen. So I'd just like to say, I mean, I agree with everything Bill has said. If you, if what you're proposing triggers a major site plan, then you have to file for a major site plan. However, my take on it is that an applicant can ask for whatever waivers they want to ask for. I mean, I think Bill was pretty clear, though, not to count on those being a but you have the ability to ask for whatever waivers you want. And if you can convince us that the waivers are appropriate, then you stand a chance of getting waivers granted. But to sit here tonight and say, we're willing to grant a bunch of waivers, I just don't think we're at that point. I think we have to see a plan and make a, you know, when we have a plan in front of us and an application, we'll do our evaluation and make our decisions based on that.
So we're, we're trying to just get some feedback to see if it's worthwhile to pursue this. Because if, if this board is going to say, no, you can't use these parking spaces because you're two feet short, and he's going to lose 10 parking spaces if he tries to redevelop this, then that's a deal breaker. So we're just trying to get open and honest feedback and trying to protect my client's investments and, and, you know, just get some general ideas. Like, I mean, it, it appears to be functioning, you know, yeah, these look like they're a little substandard. But again, I just want honest feedback. If you don't, if the board doesn't think they'd grant a waiver, have some parking spaces that are a little substandard that have been there and functioned for however many years, then I'm, I'm going to recommend that my client doesn't purchase this property, and it's probably never going to be redeveloped in that case. So we're just trying to, you know what I mean? We're just trying to get as much info as we can. And if that's the answer, that's, that's the answer. If the board thinks that it's reasonable to continue to use a grandfathered parking lot that's been there for a use that's being substantially reduced in its capacity, which I would think would be reasonable, but that's why we're here, to try to understand.
The little bit complicating layer is that that is a shared easement with the salon, and I don't own the salon, or I will not own it. And I'm not sure I can obligate them to improvements when he's not the applicant. So
Yeah, understood, understood. It's very complicated. But I think, you know, those parking spaces are more than slightly substandard. I'm not going to sit here tonight and make a, you know, make a determination on that. But if, if you, but what you propose, if it triggers a major site plan review, you have to try to conform with our regulations. And if you have areas where you can't, or for particular reasons you don't want, or then you have to ask for waivers. That's as much information as we can tell you. I can't tell you we're going to support them or not support them. We don't have a plan in front of us, so I really, you know, that's, we can't tell you here tonight that we're going to let you do a minor site plan review. You know, we just, we can tell you, you're probably going to have to go to major. But I can't tell you we're going to grant a ton of waivers. Like I said, you have the ability to ask for them.
Yeah.
And, you know, we'll take, we'll take them on face value and evaluate them. But more than that, I don't think we can give you much more direction than that.
I mean, you know, I think it would be reasonable to request this section of the parking lot remain because it's clearly, you know, you can't expand any further. We don't have the ability because we don't own the lot. So if, if we're required to bring that fully into compliance, we lose 10 parking spaces. And then there's literally no parking at all on the site. So, I mean, does this board want to see this property redeveloped? Would that, would that be a positive, or does the board just want to see this?
Go ahead, Bill.
Brian, you're PE, correct?
Correct.
So your stamp's going to go on this, that this is a safe site?
Yeah, I mean, it's been functioning forever. I'm going to, you know, I'm going to do my due diligence, I'm going to measure it out, I'm going to understand things. But, you know, it's perfectly reasonable, in my mind, to redevelop a site and use grandfathered parking spaces. I mean, a parking lot, a little, a little bumper to bumper hit a couple of times a year isn't a, isn't a safety issue. You know, if this was a major highway and the lanes were, you know, four feet too short, of course, I wouldn't be comfortable stamping that. But it's a change of use site plan, it's already there, it's already grandfathered, it's been there for, Jim, do you know how long? Twenty years? I don't know how long this whole thing's been here.
That's the 1940s. Let's, let's get, let's talk about the use, okay? You need to tell us specifically what the use is that you envisioned for that property. And the zoning administrator for the town will advise you whether or not that is an allowed use or not. And it is not in the planning board's purview for you to get waivers. You need to go to the zoning board of adjustment and
Well, we choose a use
I just wanted to clarify to the board that I explained all of these issues to the applicant, who I spent many hours on the phone with him and his engineer, and they refused to take my word for it. So I'm pleased to hear that the planning board is supporting the position that I've had, that he needs to come in with an application that defines the uses. And once the planning board takes jurisdiction and can review the waivers, but it has to go through our process. You can't just come in and ask for a carte blanche on any use that will go into that property. And if it's grandfathered, it is grandfathered for a ballroom dancing use. That's what the grandfather use is. And that's been on the market for many years because people can't find somebody who wants to take that property over for that use. So it is what it is. And I just want to
I think you've misunderstood. Many of my questions were naive because I'm not professional at this, but I've never asked for carte blanche approval. I've always asked for, how do we come to the planning board to get some feedback so we know if I can even move forward with this project? Because there are limitations with this. I know finances is not your concern of the boards, and I understand that. But there is a point where it just doesn't make sense.
Well, You heard from what the
The building sits there, and you take it back, I guess, that's your options. You know, it's been on the market for three or four years, you've had four or five buyers try to buy it. And then it's going to, it's, you're going to have, it's going to be a tax property in the next six months if you don't work with somebody on it. You can only generate so much rent out of that building. It's just, that's just the fact.
Understood, understood.
Yeah, and Diane, we totally appreciate all your feedback. You've given us great feedback. If we knew the proposed uses, or if we had an actual tenant lined up, we would 100% come in with that. But it's real early in the process, still trying to decide whether or not to buy it.
I'm worried to tell you they're going to give you, though, whatever uses you want for that
No, and we're not, and that's not really what we're asking for.
It's almost demeaning that you would even ask.
No.
You know what the site review regulations call for in New Hampshire? You're an experienced engineer.
That's what the conceptual is about, I thought. It was to
Yeah.
Well, you heard it from the board.
Hold on, hold on. Diane, I understand. I mean, they have every right to come before us and ask these questions. I don't have an issue with it. You know, I mean, that's what, that's what this is for. I understand you've spent a lot of time and you're frustrated, but that's what we're here for, is to give them some direction if possible.
And you have, thank you.
Val, you've been very quiet. What do you have to say relative to this?
Well, I support 100% the comments that you and Bill have made. I mean, you know, the applicant wants some direction, but it's difficult to give any direction other than the fact that whatever they're looking to do with the property, this change in the use, they've got to look at our regulations and see what steps they need to take to move forward in order to get those approvals.
I guess I'm trying to go, the way that I see other developers, I guess I'm trying to go the way that One second, I just, I guess my idea for coming to before you was, when I see people develop a building to rent it out after they get the approvals, they have some parameters on what they can do with it. They get those approvals so they know if they can build the building, and then they go find the tenant after the fact. I guess I'm kind of looking for a similar approach within the parameters of the zoning.
I guess my, my response to that would be, we've, we've had several applications before us with the industrial part, or buildings where they have not had a tenant.
Right. They don't, they have ideas, but they don't have a specific tenant, a very specific use. They have general uses within the zoning. And they come before you for your, for the approval.
You know, I've gone through full major site plan review for several different concepts over the past seven or eight years. They followed all of the town's regulations. Don't need new regulations without asking for a kind of waivers.
But, but hey, I'm not going to sit here and say you need to tell, you need to come before the board with, saying who your tenants are. You have to know what the uses are. I mean, you have to know if you're going to do 30% office space because that generates parking requirements. You have to know whether you're going You have to know whether you're going to do a yoga studio or, or whatever. And generally, when I do stuff like this, you end up, you, you try to permit the most intensive use or the, the highest rate of parking. So if it, you get a different tenant with a lesser use, you don't have to redesign the whole project.
Okay.
I know this is unique, this is unique, but I mean, you don't have to say it's a, you know, you, but you have to know whether you, how much office space you're going to do because that parking is associated with that.
Absolutely.
And, and Eric, that was exactly my, my, my thought was to come in with, you know, a couple of uses and, and take a stab at it, but go, you know, look the most conservative.
Sure.
You know, we weren't asking, and I'm sorry if there was a misunderstanding, we weren't just asking to have literally any use approved. We were basically, you know, the business zone allows these uses. We know we can't use a hotel, we know we can't do restaurants. So it would, it would have to fall under those, those, those lower intense uses, lower parking generators, lower septic demand generators. That's why we, you know, we think we're, you know, some sort of clothing studio. There was a tenant that, you know, we may have started to speak to that might have taken the whole use, which would, they would have only needed, you know, eight or 10 parking spaces, or some sort of mix of something else. But, you know, I mean, we've seen, you know, I've seen copies of some of the other plans that came in, and I didn't, I haven't seen a real boundary plan. There's, there's a 1993 boundary plan on here. So, you know, one of the, one of the questions is, do we need to spend $10,000 and do a full boundary survey and a full topo survey? Or can we just use the reference plans if we're not proposing it? Sounds to me, the answer I got is, yes, we have to do a full survey. We have to full, you know, fully do a full boundary, full topo survey. And I, now I appreciate, we really appreciate your time in these, and the answer on these. And Diane, I'm sorry for your, for your frustration, but it's a, it's a big investment. And, you know, Jim is really interested in, in doing this project, but he's really trying to do his due diligence and make sure he's doing it right because if he buys it and then all of a sudden, you know, he can't, he loses 10 parking spaces because they're slightly substandard, that's a, that's a, that's a big hit. And it probably wouldn't be a worthwhile investment at that point. So, you know, again, I apologize for anyone if, if it seems like we're naive, or it seems like we're, you know, trying to get away with anything. We're not. We just don't know what the proposed uses are, so we're just trying to be open and honest and get, you know, honest feedback and get as much guidance as we can before, before Jim makes a huge investment, which could go awry.
Yeah, I thought we tried to give you some parameters to, to get some informal feedback to see if, what direction we can go with this. I, hearing what you said, I'm not going to spend $50,000 and come to you and find out you're going to run it all, and then I can get, you know, half the market rent, and it's just not going to work. I just can't do that. Nobody else will either. And that's kind of why we came for the conceptual, to try to see if we can push on with this, knowing that there's got to be, you know-
Look, understood, I, I-
Some kind of feedback to know if this is-
I certainly take no offense to you being in front of us, believe me, but I think you've heard, there's a few members that haven't spoken yet, but I'll give them an opportunity to speak, but I think you've heard from the three members that have spoken that, at this point, you have to assume you've got to come in with a full major site plan application. And if that, if that makes economically unviable for you, then, you know, unfortunately, that's, that's where we are. But we can't sit here tonight and, and tell you that we're, we're going to allow a bunch of waivers that we don't know what they are or, or anything at this point.
Okay, well, thank, well, I'll talk to the seller, and then we'll make a decision, and we may be back to you.
Sure. So there's other members on the line here. Sarah, do you have any questions or comments?
No, nothing from me.
Jamie?
Yes, I'm-
Jane? Jane Ford? Are you muted, Jane? Belle, is there anybody there that has anything to say? It doesn't look like it.
All right. Well, we, we appreciate your time, and we did get the feedback, some feedback, which was more specific, but I appreciate what you've said, and we'll, we'll take it all under consideration.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, thank you all. Now, next on the agenda is a request for preliminary consultation pursuant to Chapter 32 Appendix B Site Plan Regulations, Section 2.01 by Condor Capital LLC for property located at 3 and 5 Railroad Street owned by Sidmore Revocable Trust, New England Innovation Corporation, and 5 Railroad LLC at tax map U3, Lot 138, 138A, and map U4, Lot 16. Condor Capital proposes to develop a 50-unit apartment building on said property. Is there a representative of Condor Capital LLC online?
The representative is present in person at the town hall.
Great, thank you. Would you please just introduce yourself?
I'm Ben Stevens.
Belle, we can't hear him, I can't hear him at all.
I'm going to have him sit here at one of the planning board seats with the microphones on.
Can you hear this?
Oh, yes, that's much better.
All right. My name is Ben Stevens. I've been buying properties for the last two years in New Market. What I've been doing pretty much is buying older properties, renovating them. A large renovation cost. For the last few months, I've noticed rents have, you could rise a good amount, and I've been trying to find a workforce housing. Came upon this site through Johnson, Sidmore, and Mike Seaver, and thought it would be a great location for workforce housing. I wanted to come to you guys today to just kind of go over preliminary ideas, what you thought about this site as workforce housing. The biggest constraint is it, it is a pretty small site on, for what I'm looking for, what's needed to make it financially work. It'll be a pretty big variance on density. So I just wanted to discuss what your opinions are on workforce housing in this area. Yeah, if I should start investing further steps for, um, maybe that's one development.
Um, I, Belle, just so you know, I kind of lost him there at the end, he came in broken up a little bit, but I, I'd like to ask a question anyways, before we go too far. Have you done a zoning analysis of this site?
Um, yes, a preliminary one. So there's two zones right now. There's a M2A zone, and then it's also R2. So the goal would be to merge both sites to an M2A zone.
But you would have a lot that, you don't merge sites into zones.
Sorry. Uh, I, I would put both sites as, I would try to get a variance.
Yeah. So can you hear that, Eric? Basically, he would be needing to get a variance. So I guess my, if I can jump in on comments?
Go ahead, Belle.
I'm not really sure how it makes sense to come before the planning board with a conceptual plan in looking for feedback without getting a variance, because there'd be nothing we could ever do with it. So I'm not sure what you'd be looking for from this board at this juncture.
So you're, you're recommending next steps, variance?
I'm just, my opinion as a member of this board is that, from, you know, asking us a conceptual with the, in, I know we have a plan in front of us, but even with your letter of intent, there would be nothing this board could act upon unless there was a variance. So you're, I, I just think you're before the wrong board. And Eric, Bill, any other members may have different comments with that.
No, I, I agree with you, Belle. I think it's, it's premature because whether we like the concept or not is immaterial. He can't, he couldn't submit an application to us with 50 units on it without going through the ZBA first. So I, I think that's the right process is to, to go get a variance first and then come back to the planning board.
Eric, so, does the planning board also play a role with, with master planning and things like that? And how, how does such a proposal fit within our current master plan or proposed master plan?
Well, absolutely. We're, we're responsible for a good chunk of the, of the master plan. Diane, where does this fit? That's a good question by Bill. Where does this fit in our master plan? You're muted, Diane, there you go.
Yeah, I mean, this is an M2A zone, and the density for the M2A zone is six units per acre. And the plan that I initially saw was 48 times the densi, I mean, it was eight times the density that is allowed under the zoning. And I don't think that, even with the mills, I don't think there is any project in New Market that's recently been approved where a variance to the tune of eight times the minimum residential density was allowed. As a matter of fact, when the mills originally came, you probably remember, many of you, that this went before the zoning board for a variance, and it was struck down by the zoning board of adjustment. And at the end of the day, we, we worked with the developer, and there were some zoning changes that came into being to help facilitate that project. But currently, you're absolutely correct, it has to go to the zoning board. And I want to preface that by saying, and it also has to meet the criteria for variance. And I'd be hard pressed to, personally, if it was me, to buy an argument to show that a variance is in order at that location. But it's not up to me, I'm not the person who makes that judgment.
Yeah, that's not our issue at all. We, you know, all we can say is, so this area is the master plan envisioned, that this will be, could be residential development.
Um, can we, the master plan really doesn't talk about the particular zones, that's more to our ordinances.
Yep.
You know, but I, but Bill, maybe I could address your question. The master plan certainly, in the housing chapter, would look at a diversity of housing for New Market residents. And it, obviously, we try to achieve that through the zoning mechanisms by having, you know, different densities for different parts of the town. This particular part of the town, as I'm hearing, is falling into two zones. Obviously, the M2A is a little, is higher density. You know, and that was all passed. And as Diane mentioned, we really had to change the zoning in order to be able to get a development plan to redevelop the mills. Whether or not the town, as the planning board and council, would want to revisit the M2A or totally different zone to facilitate, you know, higher density in the urban area, that would be something that the board, I think, could discuss.
And I think that, that's my main thing that I want to discuss tonight, is to make a workforce housing project work, the density does have to increase a good amount. It's just not viable to do a workforce housing project that you can get walk downtown, you can also get public transportation, and have this, you know, six units per acre. And then on top of that, you would need commercial space on the first floor.
Right.
It's just very hard.
Well, that, that question basically really would be relative to, in our housing inventory, do we believe as a town that we have adequate inventory, if you will, of units within the town that meet workforce housing criteria? Not as a particular development that was designed that way, but as a town, do we provide enough diversity to, for residents of many different income levels to be able to reside in New Market? And, and I think that's more of a discussion as to whether or not we specifically would look at developing zoning that is specific to workforce housing. And be honest, we did a portion of the mills, is that. When we did, I think it was, Diane can correct me, but I believe it was like 10 units in the mills, had to be dedicated to that live workspace, which the idea of that was, you know, trying to, again, address another housing need for particular income levels.
Right. Belle, I mean, I agree with you, but from a practical standpoint, as a planning board, you know, whatever is put before us needs to meet the zoning requirements, or it needs to have the appropriate variances. And, you know, me personally, if this project were to come before us with the proper variances to have X number of units above what the density allows, we'll have to evaluate that on, from an engineering standpoint and with our, with our regulations. We can't talk-
I agree. I was really trying to address Bill's question about master planning.
Yeah, no, no, I agree. I agree with that. But I, I mean, I just want to, you know, again, if, if the applicant were to get variances from the ZBA, then we would, and they get a site plan application in front of us, and we would evaluate it based on our site plan review criteria. That's, that's about all we can say tonight. I mean, I don't know-
I agree.
What else, what else there is to say. I don't think there's a whole lot to say other than that. Anybody else have any, anyone want to weigh in at all? Any other planning board members?
So I, in the last couple of meetings, we've been hearing from residences saying that there's a lack of affordable housing in New Market. And they've been addressing it relative to accessory use dwellings. So we've been hearing that there's a need, and, and one potential solution is allowing single-family homes to now add a second dwelling, either attached or detached from their home. Maybe this isn't terribly different than that, just, it's just a different shape.
Good point, Bill. I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. Again, my, I just come back to, you know, we, there's nothing for us to really talk about at this point until variances are obtained for the density. I mean, personally, I don't, well, I won't even go there. It's not, it doesn't really matter.
Not to interrupt you, Eric, but I think where Bill is heading is not so much as a specific project or, you know, location, but more throughout the town.
Sure. Sure.
Do, you know, do we need to readdress zoning in certain sections of the town if we don't, if we don't, in fact, have enough affordable housing within the community? And that's what the community wants.
Yep. Yep, I agree. I agree. We're going to get, hopefully, we'll get some, have a discussion with the town council on that, you know, the next, when we have that joint meeting, to, to get some ideas on where they want to go with that. Does anybody else have any questions or comments for Mr. Stevens?
One thing I'd mention about, you know, quantity of workforce housing is, is it's not just the quantity, it's also the quality. I think that there might be a substantial amount or a fine amount of workforce housing, but it's quality, I think, is something also that needs to be addressed, where it could be a new building, it's tracked in what you would want.
Don't, don't disagree with that at all. Don't disagree with that at all. I mean, unfortunately, I don't think we can give you any more, any more input. If you, if you want to move forward with that project, you have to go and get your variances before you, you come back to us.
All right, well, thank you for your time.
Any, any other board members have any comments? All right, hearing none, we will move on to new old business. Diane, is there any old business or new business you'd like to discuss? You're muted, Diane.
I'm unmuted, okay. I wanted to just follow up on the memo that I sent out to you today. I did have a conversation with Kyle Pimental, and he's making great progress with the water resource plan. And I submitted his latest draft dated August 31st to you all. And if you take a look at it, he's done a fine job, and he's incorporated a lot of the planning board comments, subcommittee comments, and he's added some nice graphics and maps, and there's some absolutely beautiful photographs in the report, compliments of Mr. Doucette. Thank you, Bill. in the report, compliments of Mr. Doucette. Thank you, Bill, for sharing those with us. Um, I just wanted to say that there's one section that um, Kyle is looking for some uh, feedback from uh, you folks on, and that is on the implementation matrix. And basically that identifies the uh, recommendations, sets some priorities, a timeframe for implementing them. And assigns a responsibility to various parties within the community for implementation. And so that's the last piece that he's working on right now. And he has asked me to uh, see if there are any planning board members or steering committee members. I know Macau, you worked on the, on the steering committee, Valerie, you did as well. If you'd like to just um, informally meet uh, through Zoom or over the phone or via email over the next couple of weeks in between um, the, the subcommittee, myself and Kyle, we can put together something and get it back to the planning board for a review at the October meeting. I think at the last meeting when we discussed Kyle's work, um, the, there were board members that definitely wanted to see this before it went public and before we had our public hearing. And what that does is pushes back the timeframe a little bit. Um, but I remember at the end of the meeting, we said, hey, if we have to have our public hearing in, in November, that would still work and um, under the terms of the grant that Kyle has, that um, isn't a problem because he's really met the intent of the grant um, that he's received through the uh, Department of Environmental Services. So I guess I'm appealing to you folks and see if there's anybody who would be willing to help out with that. And uh, so we can get something together and get it to the planning board. My hope is um, you know, within the next couple of weeks, we could get a draft, get it out to the planning board and then um, discuss it at the meeting in October, which is October, oh, thirteenth. Um, so anyway, are there any volunteers?
I can volunteer.
Oh, okay.
Kyle, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else at this point?
Diane, again, we should just continue with the committee.
Oh, well, I, okay, that's fine. I just wanted to keep it low-key and not have to, you know.
No, I think everyone should, I think everyone should res- to, should review and respond to your email, but if you're really looking for the committee to reconvene.
Well, I just want to get it done quickly. As, we, we have had problems in getting everybody on the same page during this pandemic and getting people to meetings. I mean, look how long it took us to get that TRC meeting scheduled because everybody has conflicting schedules and so forth. But anyway, that was my suggestion. Um, I think you were one of the committee members, Val, me, Kyle. I mean, if, and I don't think there was anyone else. So I mean, if the four of us meet with um, with Kyle and, and hammer that out, I just assume keep it a small group to expedite it. Doesn't mean we can't send it out to the subcommittee after we've put something together, but he's just grappling with how, how to approach this. And he feels he needs to get some feedback from the town officials on it.
Okay, um, that, that sounds like a reasonable plan.
Okay.
Now, Macau, you guys got to get and send it out to the committee after you have something together. And I, I um, and Diane, you know, I, I know you know this, but I would also say that um, I'd rather get it right than have a deadline. You know, we have a deadline. We obviously try to.
Meanwhile, things are backing up. You know, everybody's opening up again and everybody's expecting a lot. And everybody's thinking it should be business as usual. And as you know, we have a very, very full agenda.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Anything else you wanted, any?
And of course, the joint meeting with the town council is gonna be held on October fourteenth. Um, I believe we talked about that at the last meeting. And that's to discuss the gateway project, one of the other many projects we have going on in town. So anyway, um, that's about all I have for that today.
Okay.
Eric?
Yes.
Was a six o'clock meeting?
It's, I believe it's six o'clock. I have six o'clock in my schedule.
It is a six o'clock meeting. Uh, and I do want to announce that we did meet the town manager's deadline and we got our CIP together um, and submitted to him. Uh, fifty-one projects were presented and we made some recommendations and we were able to polish it off in a month's time. And I want to thank Jane Ford and Ted Seeley for their contributions and helping us through the process because it was, it was an interesting one this year. Um, and I think we had good conversations, good recommendations.
Diane, that never would have happened without you. You kept us focused. You kept all the documentations coming the right way. They were very detailed. They were very well organized. So massive kudos to you for that endeavor. It was outstanding. One of the best I've been on.
Well, it's with a lot of work.
Great. Glad to hear it. Glad to hear it. Thank you, Diane. Um, Chairman's report. I have nothing to report, other than that I'm still here. Um, anybody committee reports? Um, many committees. Bill Doucette, any committee reports? Are you on a committee? Here we go. Okay. Uh, Macau? No? Um, Jane, Sarah, Jamie, you guys have anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Nothing.
So, great. So Diane, I, I gotta believe that you're conversa-
Oh, Valerie.
Trying to give you a report.
Oh, go ahead.
It's more like a report of not a report. Kristen and I had trouble getting together to actually talk about the ADUs. We had a few conversations, but not as productive as I would have liked between the last meeting and now.
Okay, thank you. I think that's gonna be on our agenda with the uh, with the council to get their uh, their priorities, see how, how they want us to spend our, our time and money. We have limited resources and I've met, spoken with Diane about it and we, Anne, Steve and, and Val, we're gonna try to prioritize how we uh, can approach some of these things that we need to address anyways. So, um, thank you. Um, Diane, do you have anything else? Planner's report. You probably said everything you need to say already.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, if nobody has anything else they'd like to add, I want to take a motion to adjourn.
Jane?
Make a motion to adjourn, Val.
Is there a second?
Oh, she's muted.
Second.
Who was, who was that? Who, who yelled first?
I want that. I want it. Second.
Jane's attention because she usually is the.
I'm usually the one who jumps on. I'm, I'm having problems with the audio and the visual. Um, so I'm working, I'm doing it via the phone and the screen, so.
Okay. Anybody wanna try to convince us to stay on and not adjourn? Okay, hearing none. Hey, um, all right, so I have to do a roll call as per the uh, the, our stuff. But before I do, Val, I want to thank you for uh, going to town hall and having that meeting tonight. I know it's, it was very difficult to get everything organized, but you and Diane, I appreciate your help. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Val.
So as far as motion to adjourn, uh, um, Val, are you in favor of adjourning?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Jane?
Yes.
Mr. Doucette?
Yes.
And I, Eric, vote yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. It's been a challenge, but we got through it tonight. Bill, thank you for your help. Take care.